Okay, 6:3910 a.m. Consideration of Lake County Tourism Improvement District 2022 Annual Marketing Report. And we have Brian Fisher. If you want to come on up and join us.
I would love to.
You can sit up here if you'd like.
You know, this is easier for me to look this direction. Is that working out okay? I'm going to just do this. Then I don't have to worry. Thank you very much, Board of Supervisors and county staff. I'm going to keep this as quick as I can for everybody. I know time is important here, so let's dive right into our 2022 Annual Report. I guess I don't have anything to click it with. No, okay, there we go. Thank you, Sam. Our Agenda Day for this report, we're going to look at board members really quick. A few changes, very few changes. The economic impact of tourism in Lake County, very important to keep in mind. We're going to look at our marketing program overview for '22. How did we do? And we're going to look at, touch at the very end on our district renewal. Right off the bat, board has not changed a great deal since last year's report. There's one new addition in there, and I think actually Susan is a new addition in there. It was Jessica in our last report. But we've got Alfredo over at the Robinson Rancheria, who is now sitting on our board, and has been a great board member. But all of these board members, as well as Will Deschok out here in the chamber, do a lot of work. They show up a lot. I think we've only one time not, maybe twice, not had a forum. We've done pretty well. It's a, it's a pretty active group. So I want to thank the board, and we'll go to the next slide. So how do we measure our marketing success? We look at website traffic. That's kind of the Holy Grail for destination marketing organizations. Who's at our website? Where are they going? What are they spending time with? What are they doing when they're on our website? We're going to look at our social media growth and engagement, even more important. How are people reacting to what we're putting out there? Campaign impressions and performance, that's the media that we're paying for. We're going to also look at our email database growth, a big, big category of driving traffic to our website and engendering interest in the county. Our partnerships that we have throughout the county and throughout the region, as well as public relations. Next slide. So right off the bat, let's look at '22 in terms of revenue for the district or for the assessment. We were down from '21 about 24%. So a pretty big chunk, almost $100,000 out of our budget in '22 versus '21. We rode a pretty good pandemic time in 2021, folks. We're seeing that people can now get in their cars, go further. They can actually get on planes and then go other places. So we're seeing that, that decrease. And the next slide will show you kind of where the real big decreases came. It came out of the county, almost $100,000 less in '22 than '21. The county TOT was slightly different because they were paid out differently in '21 versus '22. Clear Lake was down by about $3,000 or $4,000. Lakeport only down by about $2,000. And up were Twin Pine Casino and Robinson Rancheria, our two contracts. So some good news there and good partnerships that we've, we've created with our two contract partners. And our next slide will show you the economic impact. This is data from Visit California from Pete Runyon and Associates. So the, just the, the real crux of this is for everybody who we get into our county to stay in our, one of our hotel rooms or one of our short-term rentals, they're going to spend a dollar in that hotel room, and they're going to spend another $3 outside of it. Economic impact of a visitor is huge. 175 million, according to this research, in Lake County in 2021 and 2022. 13 million in taxes, both state and local taxes, and almost 1,800 people are employed tangentially to the hospitality industry in Lake County. So it's a very important industry for us, one that we obviously want to keep, keep growing and, and keep moving. Then the next slide, our website traffic, again, back to that. It's kind of the Holy Grail. This is lakecounty.com. Page views were up. Even in a year where we had less budget, we're up about 464,000. So organically, our website is doing extremely well. It's a very big category of people coming directly to our webs, our website, searching us out. Top performing pages are kind of interesting. I just like it because it's cabins, homepages, our events, outdoor recreation, and then lo and behold, Harbin Hot Springs. So Harbin Hot Springs does pretty well for the county and does well for our website. New Users was up 12% and Sessions were up 12% or 9%. And the next slide, organic social media. We have quite a goldmine in Karen Pavoni, who runs our social media. She's very good at not only shooting and covering the county, but she's also good about writing about the county. Our Facebook increased in '22 to up 3% and a whopping 32% for Instagram followers. They're all coming out of the right markets for us, Los Angeles, Sacramento, Santa Rosa, San Jose, San Francisco, and Stockton. So great, really good traffic and extremely good numbers coming out of our organic social media. And then the next slide would be paid search. It was down across the board. Search is just that, paid search is exactly that. You get what you pay for. We didn't have the budgets that we had in '22, so we were down about 12% in impressions, 16% in clicks, and 15% in click-throughs. So the more we have to spend in paid search, the more we get people to our website. Programmatic display banners, this is unfortunately not going to play for you right now, but this will actually be on our website if you'd like to go see the banners that are running programmatically. We did about 1.8 million impressions from our programmatic display banners. And then our connected TV, over-the-top TV. We don't do linear television. We do basically YouTube and Pre-roll, 2.2 million impressions there. These are really nice ads. These are really engaging. This is kind of where we get our brand across. This is where we, we get to show ourselves. And again, you'll be able to see it on our website. We ventured for the first time in '22 into something very new, a new category called influencer marketing. It's a, it's a crazy category to try to figure out, but we wanted to make a, we wanted to take a stab at it. The agency, Medium Giant, helped a lot on this. We had to identify influencers that were really reaching our region because some influencers may live near you, but their audiences are often New York or down in Florida. You never know. So we really looked at who could help us the most. The company that would, the couple that we came up with was Don't Forget to Move. And something that the agency negotiated, which was extremely important for us, was we got to own all of the assets that they shot while they were here. So we've used that 15 minutes versus with the video. We've cut those into commercials that will run outside the county. We use all their images. We use all that stuff. That was a real big advantage because a lot of the influencers don't give you that, 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 those assets. They take them with them. We had six posts, two blog posts, and two vlog posts, and we really kept the budget really minimal, but we got them all around the county, and we feel really good about our first influencer marketing venture. The next slide, our paid social. So we pay for people to see our banners outside of the county or, excuse me, to see our social media. 80% increase in impressions, 90% increase in clicks, and almost a really a great click-through rate. Industry is about 90%, so an excellent click-through rate for our, our social media that runs outside the county. Very happy with that. Next slide. We also did some updated audience intelligence. We wanted to see where are people coming from? Santa Rosa is a real emerging market for us. We see more and more numbers on Santa Rosa into Lake County. And we also, down at the bottom, you'll see Yuba City. So we actually increased some of our spend in social, our paid social and our paid search in those two markets. So we're kind of keeping a watch on it versus big San Francisco and big Sacramento Valley, which we know are our big markets. Next slide. Our newsletter has continued to grow, over 7,300 contacts. Our open rate is way above industry average. Put a lot of work into these. We really tried to engage people. I don't know if you saw the new email that just went out this week. We've got a perfect day in Clear Lake, really great piece. We've also got, we're redoing our, our loops, the kayak loops. As you know, or maybe you don't know, those, the website is dead for the kayak loops. And so we're trying to resurrect them in the form of blogs and keep them on our website. Good industry, you know, great, above-average click-through. And anyway, we, we like our newsletter. It draws a lot of traffic to our website after that news, that email drops, and they spend a lot of time with it. The Lake County Visitor Map, another fully paid map, 65,000 maps outside of county. Very happy with how that has gone. We just redid the map, and we just did a new distribution on it for this year, but that was in 2022. It's fully ad-supported, so yay for fully ad-supported. Another partnership is our friends at, excuse me, our friends at North of Ordinary through Visit California. It is Del Norte County, Humboldt, and Mendocino County. Great website traffic. It's in the top 10 in terms of delivering traffic to our website. So we have a great partnership there. Those guys are really great to call on. They help out, and you know, they're, 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 it's, it's, it's an excellent group. We've really, we've kind of really hit the ground running as a, as a team and excellent, excellent resources for us to have here in Lake County. It's those, those folks. Our next partnership, well, that partnership actually drove us down to the Travel and Adventure Show, which was in 2022 in May, and we were able to distribute about six, about over 1,000 of our maps. We got, increased our email database by about 600, and we would never have been able to afford to go to the show on our own, folks. These shows are really expensive. All those other counties more than doubled the spend in order for us to get there. Really, again, great partnership with our North of Ordinary folks. The next one is, we continue to fund the wonderful Michelle Carson CTA of the Year. That was this year, not '22. The CTA program. So we fund $5,000 to the Chamber with the CTA program. I really rely on CTAs. I go to them for help, DoS and Lead Tours, you name it. The CTAs are great, and it's a great program for Lake County. People are really proud of the county and really learn stuff that they never have, would have known about the county after they take the program. Our Book Direct widget, okay, what is the stupid widget? Well, a widget is something that we bolt onto our website that allows people to search for listings directly. And it also allows us on our advertising to drive people directly to their, to listings. So it really gets us closer to our customer, which is our stakeholder. We want to really drive that traffic to people looking for places to stay. And we started that last year mid-May, only had about 5,700 searches by the end of the year, but that number is completely taken off this year. A really great widget. We like what we're doing there. Next is our Visit California. We sent Trudy Wakefield to a great media event down in the Presidio, San Francisco. About 50 reporters were there. They're all looking for story ideas. We had great little gift giveaways that we created for the county, and out of it came a really beautiful article in Seven by Seven magazine. So we're happy with that, you know, cause and effect. It's nice to see it happening. And then our trade shows, Visit California. The three of us attended Visit California's trade show at the Hilton in February of '22. Really important for Lake County to show up at these events, really important for us to have a seat at that table, and they're, they're great events. We learn a lot, and we get seen, and we get heard, and we send that message to Visit California that we are in the tourism business here in Lake County. And last but not least, our fantastic renewal, which was a bear, but it is over. We've renewed the district. It will start on January 1st. As all of you know, it's a 10-year district. We got a 75% increase in that assessment. Since then, we've had, we'll probably have three new lodging opening. We've got Hotopia, we'll have getaway opening, and we've got Conackdie Harbor, you know, up and running. So we really expect and hope to see this number continue to grow, to really fund this district. We really struggled at 1.5% there in that last year, as you can see, and it's just, we're looking forward to having this new district in place, and off we go. And with that, I would like to say thank you to you all. I know I blew through that, but I would love to answer any questions, which I know there will be.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
You and the board do incredible work. I just love like reminiscing and thinking back over the last few years and, and how much progress that we've made, and that's been with your leadership, so really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do we have questions from the board? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Very impressive always. I saw one redirect in there, so I saw FindLakeCounty.com. So are you finding like playing with some of the long-tail search terms or something like that? I'm just curious how that redirect popped up in your marketing.
Yeah, that's the only URL that we own. I mean, it's really hard to find redirects or to find URLs with Lake in it anymore. They're pretty much gone. So we did get, and we do have FindLakeCounty.com, and that goes on like our billboards. All of our brand stuff is Find Lake County so that we can kind of have some sort of a sense of gauging how that brand is, is actually drawing people possibly to the website. So that's what we use that for.
Yeah, cool. Second question, just obviously your metrics are great. Obviously, you're all tourism-focused, but I'm, because of that success, I'm immediately thinking of our poor little redesign government website. And so I guarantee nobody's looking for government resources, but if you got them anyway, could there be one little footer link or something like that? So if people are looking to connect with government resources, maybe there'd be a way to, to do that. Just one little weensey link would be one thought. But other than that, very, very impressive. You have a lot of things going on in the, in this marketing campaign. I'm very impressed by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Anyone else? Supervisor Swatia?
Just a quick question. It looks like, just a comment first off. It looks like we resolved the Lakeport issue where the number didn't seem to match what the number should be. I saw it went up to like 10% out of the full amount that you receive from all jurisdictions that take part in that. So that, that sounded good, looked good. I hope it's completely resolved. But I did notice that in the year-to-year comparison assessments from '21 to '22, it went down in '22. Do you have any specific reasons as to why that might be? I know you guys put a lot of effort in your 10-year and did not necessarily spend the same amount of capital on marketing during that time, so just kind of curious what might come to mind.
The renewal was actually not budgeted for in '22. We did not realize that we had to renew our district, and we didn't, we had no idea that it would cost us $51,000. So we really quickly had to kind of draw down everything and be able to pay to get the district renewed. There was no other way to do it as well. I mean, kept looking at how else can we do this? Can we just ask our stakeholders if they want to renew? Well, it doesn't work that way. So, and, and the good news of that is I believe the first time the creation of the district was a little over $140,000. So we kind of got it at a bargain that we got the renewal. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we, we definitely had to scramble with resources there. The other thing is, I mean, if you can see that number for the, the county TOT was, was almost 100,000 less, and part of that is because we're, we run our business on a cash basis. We received in 2021 money from 2020 that was, that was from September of 2020, and we didn't receive it until February. So those payments were really late, and so it kind of, it kind of put money into '21 that was really 2020 money, but we, you know, we never know where it was going to come from. It was just kind of waiting and seeing. I think it's gotten a bit better. I mean, it has gotten better. You know, we would, we would like, I mean, I don't want to take you there, but we think there's some ways that we can make it get better, and it's hard to run a marketing organization when you don't really know what your numbers are going to be. You have to make these commitments upfront to media vendors and to our agency. You really, we really struggle to do that now.
But you're working with Patrick, our tax collector, to work out those issues.
And we are, and Patrick is totally receptive. We're getting things going. What we're seeing, I mean, just kind of anecdotally, we're seeing like Lake, Clear Lake collects TOT monthly and remits monthly. That's probably a better setup really for everybody. I know it's a lot more work probably, but like as, as somebody who pays into TOT, all of my bills are monthly. I don't really have quarterly bills, so I, it just, it's, it's just not a normal metronome for business is this quarterly payment. It's okay if you're, you know, maybe you're behind on something or you're paying your taxes, but we pay things monthly, everything, electric, insurance, everything. It would be much easier if, I think, the county collected TOT monthly. It just, your, your numbers would be cleaner and they would be closer. I think we'd have a lot less fining because people wouldn't forget, because I even forget. Lynn Butcher, we always forget. It's like, oh, God, these things do. So anyway, I think that would work, and we definitely see at a Clear Lake, it's super consistent, really consistent, and we know we're going to get a check from Clear Lake for about $6,600 every month. That helps a lot for our budgeting, whereas we kind of don't know on the other two very much at all. We're getting better, but long answer.
Did you have something else?
No.
Yeah, and I, just continuing to work with Patrick.
Patrick's great, yeah. We've got somebody that we can, all good.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Vice Chair Simon?
Appreciate you coming, all the work that's done. You know, obviously now we got the 10-year, so we can look at that long-term strategy as we're moving forward. Did have a couple of questions. When, when North of Ordinary, when you guys attended that, I see that there was a stay and play package, some other stuff that was raffled off at the booth.
Yep.
You know, as partners, I think, reaching out to partners to make sure we have as much of that as possible for getting guests here in the community. I know a lot of folks would have those same packages. We can just inundate them with it. I also had another question with the TID, and just thinking of the marketing opportunity, would this be a story for PEG? I guess is a question. Would that be something, I know it's educational, would be educating outside community and other folks in the community for PEG district for, I don't know, just
There's always the possibility.
A short little program or something that we have going on. A lot of folks watch it here locally. I just think it'd be interesting to have. I saw a unique program that Channel 9 does, obviously a bigger audience, you know, for public TV where they raffle off a lot of Northern California vacation spots and other stuff, more local stuff. Maybe a partnership with KQED or something like that also
Sure.
might be an opportunity for. So just kind of putting some ideas out there as we keep moving forward with these things, telling our story.
Yep.
We'll say it all the time. Also, I see that Visit California has reached out to some of the tribal nations, I know ourselves. There's a big push right now throughout, you know, the United States and a lot of the ag, or the cultural tourism. I think there's a couple of articles that came out in Visit California regarding to our tribal nations here in Lake County. So just continuing on that push too. I know there's a big push for that right now, which may be an opportunity for all of us to work together with the unique cultural history that Lake County has and then, and now where we're at in the different business world.
So
Yeah. Just want to mention all those things. We're open to those conversations. I know Larry Glupay from our community is on there, and want to continue those conversations as we're moving forward.
Yeah, that's the Native California campaign, and Visit California's put a lot of money behind it. I know Urocs up in Del Norte have done a lot, as well as the Agua Caliente folks tribe down in Palm Springs. And we've, I've seen both of them speak at events, and it's very insightful, what they're doing to basically rekind of define what tourism means to them. And, and it's, it's really cool. I mean, the coolest, I mean, for sure, is what I see up in Del Norte. The Urocs, they are like rocking it up there. Steve, Jim Bacon, Jim Bacon, CEO up there of their tribe is, they're just, they've, they're running it like, they're running it like a business, like an MBA. It's crazy. It's really cool. Good stuff. Neat.
That's all I have.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Brian, appreciate, I really appreciate seeing these numbers increase the way they have. I know you've been putting in a lot of work. It's just, it's great to see. I know that, you know, like you mentioned with the TID and TOT, with the collection of it kind of, you know, puts that into perspective where you can't get a real good grasp on what you're looking at. But at the same time, with what you have, I mean, I've just been following and just all of the people you reach, all of the pictures are awesome, like the Blue Lakes pictures in the, in the, I don't know if that's on Mount Conackdie, but I just, I think those are the things that people like seeing. I mean, I know that when we go to different events for RCR, see they have pictures of each of the counties, and everybody's just like, wow, that's beautiful, where's it at? So great job.
Thank you.
So we're going to need some of those pictures for the conference in September?
We are.
We're going to need some
I know, I just got another ask from, I forget who. Anyway, we're, we're really generous. I mean, we really, I mean, if it, you're going to promote the county, we're all in. We just, that's, it's all, and, and most people are. I, I go to the, the Photogood, Photographer Lake County Photogood on, on, it's a group on Instagram, and I ask those folks, and Karen does too, people really are good about sharing up here, and we, we need that because we just, we don't have a lot of budgets for sending people out on shoots. It's pricey.
I don't know if it's, I mean, it might be a little out there, but Groupon, you guys work with them? I heard you say something like that. I don't know if you did. Group, Groupon?
No, not, not Groupon, not at all.
Oh, okay.
But it's, it's, it's a, anyway, there's the Lake County Photogood, and there's a lot of semi-professionals that's put their photography out there. Mostly it's Lake County, a lot of, a lot of scenic stuff, but we use, we use a lot of, a lot of stuff that people share with us, and our asset bank is good. It looks good. Happy with it.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Or anyone in Zoom? Let me check. I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, is it possible to take up item 5.2?
Yes, yes. I was just going to say that. Okay, so we will go to the pulled item 5.2. Approve agreement between the County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California for provision of administrative services to Lake County Tourism Improvement District in the amount of $112,500 from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign. And who pulled it?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Unless there's other reasons. Thank you very much.
So first and foremost, before I make any requests for changes on there, I want to say how much I do appreciate the TID. None of what I'm about to state is that you're not doing a good job. It's, I want to push you guys and challenge you guys. Number one, I hope that we can work in the next following year on a multi-year contract. I think you guys need some predictability in what you're going to do, and it can help you maybe even get a reduced rate on whatever contracts you're getting if you can do multi-year contracts, not just a one year at a time, hoping and wondering if we're going to get the same type of support from all the different jurisdictions. So hopefully in the next iteration, that's going to be, that can be a topic of conversation. I don't want to change that this year. That's too big of a change to do right here, right now. Second one is, and it was interesting that I was going to bring this up today because I was listening to the news on the radio on the way here to work, and they were talking about the new dates of when the, the population shifts that are occurring with, by, I think now it's 2035 or something like that, less than 50% of America will be white. They also said that the average age of white America is something like 49 or something like that, and those of color, it's average age of 37. We are offering an adventure here, and we are surrounded by communities that are very diverse, and I'm not seeing the diversity in our imagery that we are putting out there. And I want to challenge you to get greater diversity within the pictures that we are putting on the billboards, that we're putting on the website, however it is that we are sharing and marketing. I know that you are sharing the diversity of activities here, but I want to make sure that everyone, no matter if it's from Sacramento, San Francisco, Yuba City, wherever they're coming from, that they can imagine themselves here enjoying their time in Lake County. And I think that imagery is very helpful to make it attractive for everybody. And so I've been looking through your stuff. We talked about it last time, and here is an opportunity to put it in writing. And so I would like to offer to add to the agreement, which would be 1.9, I believe. Let me make sure I'm looking at the right thing here. So on page three, under section Contractor Responsibilities, it stops at 1.8. And so 1.9, and I just worded it, it could be changed. Lake County TID shall place an emphasis on marketing the county as a whole equitably around the lake. emphasis on marketing the county as a whole equitably around the lake. That was another one of the conversations we had, to ensure that there is advertisement for the North Shore, make sure there is equal advertisement for Clear Lake, Middletown. It seemed to me very heavy on the Kelseyville and Lakeport area. So that's one of them. And then the other one, which I started to breach the topic earlier, 1.10, Lake County TID shall promote Lake County using our population's diversity in its imagery. I just think it's important. I think it's something that we should all strive for and I want to challenge you and, and push you to make it happen so that we can make sure that everybody wants to come to Lake County and feels welcoming and comfortable in coming here. And so looking to see if the board is in agreeance or not to those additions. Other than that, the amount and the rest of the agreement is fine by me. I want to keep supporting the TID and what they do.
So the, the contract is annual though, because it's based on the financials. There we go. Stephen Carter.
Good morning, Board. So the reason why this agreement is annual is because it's based on what is projected as one ninth of the TOT that is gonna be received for the county. And doing a three-year estimate is possible, but it would not be very accurate. And the reason why one ninth, that's actually what was in policy for marketing before the TID existed. So it is possible, but it would not be very accurate.
Supervisor Spatier.
Just as a response to that, as a business, if you tell me you're gonna give me $112,000 per year, it gives me an idea of what I can spend. We amend contracts all the time, but at least they'll know that there's a three-year contract that is gonna happen rather than a year to year. So again, not negotiating the years today. Appreciate the extra information on that, but I don't think one ninth, in my opinion, is not something that I would be worried about on a multi-year contract to provide extra assistance for them to be able to market better and use their money more efficiently to do the marketing.
Okay. So I'm not seeing any more comments from the board, unless you have something?
No.
Yeah?
I'll just respond with the addition of number nine. Obviously, a bigger conversation needs to happen on the multi-year contracts, which I completely agree. We need to have it and figure it out as we're moving forward, especially since we just had the 10-year renewal. So we need to look at that from a decade standpoint as we're moving forward. You know, so definitely would like to see that conversation come back before next year. And then obviously, I think adding it when we're, when we're talking about the diversity and the, you know, everything that here is in Lake County, I completely agree with seeing yourself somewhere obviously makes that a little bit better. So I'm in agreement with the addition of number nine, but I would like to hear from the TID too on that conversation.
And if I can clarify, number nine was to market the county equitably around the whole lake?
Yep.
And 10 was the diversity.
Oh, yeah, two. Okay. I apologize. So nine and 10.
So in terms of our, our diversity and our advertising is something we've, we've definitely tried to work hard at. We don't have budgets for models, so we can't be very specific. We've put out calls on social media. And unfortunately, when we were doing this, it was kind of at the middle of COVID, so we had to do all sorts of other things involved to get people in a group who didn't really know each other. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue. I mean, we know that we want to show and represent the diversity that, that comes to Lake County. The hard part is finding it in Lake County sometimes, when you're really trying to find models from Lake County. And we did, we did, you know, we, we have natives in our ads. We've had Latinos and Latinas in our ads. We've had same-sex couples in our ads. We've tried to be as diverse as we can pulling from our population. But it is, it is, we found it difficult to get to that next place that we, we know we'd like to be. So we'll, we'll keep working at it. I mean, we, we definitely, the influencers, we had to take the way that came. They were, you know, they were great influencers, but they were, there wasn't any diversity there. But we really felt like that was the right group because of the assets that we would get. And then we used all of those assets in our advertising because they were free. Essentially, we'd paid for them. So we're trying to do things pretty, pretty much on a budget, obviously. And we'll continue to do that. I, I would, I mean, I, I always scout out people and think, can I go up and tap them on the shoulders and say, do you live here? Would you show up to a shoot? It's like, because it's hard to find them in county. We could pay models, but it's hard to find them in county. And it's interesting. That's kind of, did anybody, they don't, I'm not gonna go there.
And if I could respond to that, I would say use us as well if you're looking for people to be a part of your future shoots. We, we have a wide circle.
And I think it'll be easier without COVID. That was really complicated. We had people who showed up who would have been great in the shoot, but they hadn't, they hadn't, they couldn't verify that they were, they had been vaccinated. And so we had to say no to those people that day. And so, you know, it was just really complicated because you've got this whole weird thing going on that sat right in the middle of the shoot. But now we don't have all those issues. We can pull people together and not be weird about it. So in terms of covering the lake, we struggle. We, I do, I, I reach out always to, we look and dig and try to find things. I mean, our newsletter is probably the best example of how we really try to get coverage around the lake. I mean, we assign these stories based on not really interest, but really what have we not covered and what can we cover? It's, it's, it's hard. It, it is hard. And, but we, we're working at it and we're gonna continue to work at it. We want to represent all of Lake County. It is sometimes a tough quilt to sew together, but we try. We really do. That is, you know, and, and when you have so much happening between Lakeport and Kelseyville, it's, it's, it's easy to just use that because that's what, you know, that's what draws people and that's what's, that's our sizzle. So worked really well with the Catfish Derby this year and they were really helpful in giving us information. So much of it is, is getting people to respond and to reach out to us because we don't always know what's going on in all of these pockets in our county. And when they do, we're like on it, we're way on it. We're like featured in all of our social. We put it everywhere. But we need to know. So when I speak to people, they always say, what can you do? What can we do to help? And it's like, let us know what you're doing or organize and put together a website that we can go to and we can understand what's happening. And I can look, I go to the chambers website to find events all the time because people know to go to the chamber. They don't know to go to us as much. So I do pull stuff off of there. But we try very much to tell this 360 story of the county, but it, it sometimes doesn't show.
Supervisor Crandall?
No, I think what might help too is with the, with both of the tribal hotels, the GMs or whoever's on the board have marketing departments. And they schedule each year, they have the, the big times. And in those big times, they offer booths where people come from all sorts of walks of life in the county, from the county. And so that might be a, a nice way to start. Just talk with like Alfredo or, or is it Larry or Jeff now?
Yeah.
And so talk with them about their big times. That might be a place where you can work with, with them to get some good, you know, material or whatever the case may be. Because I do know that a lot of times when the marketing departments are advertising, they work with their employees. They have them, which is very diverse as well. I know at Robinson, they're pretty diverse. So that, that may be a good, a good place to start and maybe talk to them about even having some of the, the folks that are part of the employee list do it. And I know they're always often, often very accessible. I know that, and I know Habemotlal, Running Creek isn't, isn't necessarily a part of this, but I know in their advertising, there's always people that are either from the tribe or from that work there. So I, and I don't know how that works with the, you know, models and whatnot, but I know that, that's in, you know, a way to outside the box type of working.
Yeah. I mean, it's just finding, it's finding the resource, it's finding them is really what we will do. We've got our model release forms. It's not complicated what we do. And it's generally, you know, it's a pretty good day. Give them lunch, some fun. But, you know, we, we struggled while we talked about doing a lake shoot this year because of the lakes level is beautiful. We just didn't have the resources to do it. Shoots basically cost about $5,000 just right out, just for almost nothing. And that just base, that gets everybody there. That is pretty much what it takes. And that's, I mean, if you've got a videographer there, if you've got somebody doing drone stuff, you're talking 20, 25, $30,000. And we've looked at, you know, there's great resources around us and there's a new guy that just moved to the county. I mean, I'm always, you know, hearing from these folks, but the numbers behind it are just not numbers that we can, we can do yet. We just have to kind of work with the budgets that we've got because if we spend all the money shooting it, then we're not gonna have any money to put it on to, to, to advertise it. I mean, it just, that, it just boils down to, we want to keep as much of our resources to do our outside marketing as we can. So that's why when we found the influencers, we were like, hey, this is a really good deal. We get 15 minutes of assets.
Right.
High resolution, drone, everything. It's like, all right, I'm in. But they were
You might be able to get, you probably won't have to use as many resources when it comes to the, you know, the two different tribes because the, you know, their employees work there and they just sign a release. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
It's on duty. And that's kind of one of those things that they do anyhow when, when they market. So I don't know. You could work that out with them. I'm not sure of the details, but I know they do it all the time. So that might be a way to not have to spend all the resources. If so, I mean, that's just something you'll have to work out with the GMs.
Yep.
So I appreciate that. We've had this conversation multiple years now. And I agree with the sentiment, but I'm concerned about making it a contract obligation and how is it enforced and what are the ramifications? And so I, I am hesitant to move forward on that today, just doing that on the fly, because I want to make sure that it's well thought out and articulated. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I share that particular sentiment as well. But also, we're talking about future contract items. I just wanted to circle back on a couple of things. But the website is fine, is a landing site, obviously, for Visit Lake County, but the TID itself. So there's, again, there's another domain in the privacy policy, discoveryourlake.com. That appears to also have some of your governance documents and stuff like that. So on the main website, it'd be nice to have some governance documents and about page or something like that. It's not gonna be a highlight of this landing page, but clearly we want to identify what the TID is. And if there's any branding confusion about our various earls, let's resolve that. So I was curious about the governance documents and how discoveryourlake.com fits into that and if we can start merging that in a future iteration. On the main website, that raised questions of cookie policies. You need one. Privacy policy needs an update to ensure compliance with the California Online Privacy Protection Act. As many websites in our county do, I'm not picking on you guys, but copy is a thing and it's been for many years. So we need to figure that stuff out. One reason I would hesitate on addressing diversity right now is like, yeah, how do you enforce that in a contract provision? More importantly, we've discussed before, previous meetings, the use of remarketing technologies in Facebook and stuff like that. So the more we attempt to inject a diversity metric into this, that would probably, we would be asking you guys to actually do, you know, keyword search terms in your advertising to market to certain groups and stuff like that. Maybe a direction we need to go. Certainly the technology is there. But the more we talk about that, the more I want to talk about remarketing and
Okay, let's keep it to the contract.
Yeah. So plenty of things we could throw in a future contract, including just the nuts and bolts of transparency and governance. But on that one, one subject, I think we kind of have to think about that.
So I, I really appreciate the sentiment about the diversity. I promise you, that's something we're gonna continue to try to do. We'll work at it. We just need, you know, we need to, we're very conscious about the money that we spend doing this stuff. We have to be. We have a $330,000 budget to market the county. Mendocino next door has 1.8. So we just don't, we just have to do things a little bit more, that's funny. I don't know. But I promise that, I mean, that, that it's the form, it's at the forefront of our mind when we do this. I've got to do a shoot at my own property. I'm, I'm struggling there too. Like, how do I do this? I want people and I want diversity, but hard sometimes to pull it out of the, pull it out of the county.
Okay. I'm gonna open this up for public comment. If we have anyone in the chambers that wishes to speak on this. And not seeing anyone. I do have a hand up in the Zoom room. Ginger Kite, you can unmute, state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Hi. Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I wanted to input because I am a volunteer administrator for Facebook and Instagram for a number of groups. The Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce, Visit Lower Lake, Lower Lake Community Action Group, and the Lower Lake Schoolhouse Museum. I do everything as a volunteer. I do not pay for anything. I create content and I share content. I'm thinking I'm gonna reach out to you, to the, to the Visit Lake County, then share some of the things that I do and share some of the information that I have. I'm happy to do that. I, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ginger. And Brian, would you be willing to give your contact information or a place for her to reach out to you?
Absolutely. I mean, it's the alias URL that I work with, which is info@discoveryourlake.com. Karen Pavoni is also, and I will connect you Ginger with Karen. Karen is who we really want to connect you with. She's one running our mark, our, our social channels. And we would love information coming from you. Please.
I, can I, can I speak again?
Sure.
Okay. Karen, Karen Pavoni, I follow on, she's a friend of mine on Facebook. I follow her on Facebook. I share her information. One of the things that I do with, you mentioned Lake County Photographers Guilder, Guild. One of the things I do every Sunday, it's called Photography Sunday on the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce page. And that's what I do. I share photos. I'm very familiar with Karen. I would be delighted to work with her.
Okay.
Great.
Just as a reminder, we're talking about the contract now. So let's stay on our topic. Thank you so much, Ginger, for your input. And we have any, any other public comments? I'm not seeing anyone else in the boardroom or in Zoom. So we'll bring it back to the board and Supervisor Spatier.
So I would like to see this being added to the contract. I know that there's some skepticism as far as what we're adding. I just want to read 1.1. Contractors shall cooperate with county and county staff in the performance of all work hereunder. What's our measurement of that? It's just to put in writing what we hope the relationship brings to us. And I'm hopeful, because it's the second time that I've brought it up and I don't want to bring it up again without, I feel if we do a contract, there should be expectations. Part of my expectations is for us to challenge the TID to meet these, these things that we've been talking about. And if we don't put it in writing, I feel it's not gonna happen in the same way. Then if we put it in writing, it will push and challenge them to make that happen. I don't want to punish them i- i- if it doesn't happen in the way that I want it to happen, but it's a challenge. And if it's in writing, then it's set. And I see no issues with adding the terms in the contractor responsibilities.
Yeah. And the reason I, I disagree with doing it in the moment and not taking some time to sit down with county council and with the TID and work it out in a way that, you know, is really forward-thinking and works for all of us. So I disagree with doing it today, but I'm, we can bring it back and have another discussion after staff has had time to work on it. I don't know if anyone else has.
Yes, she's
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I hesitate to encourage the board to make any amendments today and for the very reason that the Tourism Improvement District Board will have to reconvene and review any amendments made to this contract. And we just met last week and we don't meet again till October. Is that correct?
11th.
11th. I guess we could try to schedule a special meeting, but again, that, I don't want to delay the revenue given our budgetary levels at this point in time. I do recommend that we meet after this meeting to develop the contract for next year to include all those items discussed today, including the length of time, diversity and expectations, so that both the TID Board can have time to review it and this board too.
Supervisor Crandall?
I think they could absolutely have a special meeting. I brought this up in subtle ways when they laid out the first initial presentation about the areas on the North Shore, the different tribes, the different ethnicities. There, I just mentioned some possible ways to work with the different tribes and their hotels and their marketing departments. There's also a Juneteenth event that usually happens in Middletown where some folks can go over and, and talk with some folks that possibly would want to do something like that. So I, I think, I think it's fine to me, but I think there's a possibility that things can happen. So unless there's something legal that we can't, we have to look at, but otherwise I'm fine with it.
So if it comes back to us after, whether it's a special meeting or the next month's meeting with an amendment, I'm okay to move forward, but I haven't seen a change. And I get it that in the past year, there hasn't been, but it's not, again, the first time it's been discussed or brought up. And I hesitate to understand the repercussion of us kicking this type of philosophy and, and way of thinking down the road for the next year's contract. I think we need to do what's I think we need to do what's appropriate and correct. I'm willing to help out with the finances to say today, we approve what we have in front of us with the promise that the amendments, as suggested, will be brought back to their Board and brought back to us as an amendment as soon as possible, not next year. I just think it's important that we get this right and that we challenge. Again, I know it's difficult, but I want to push for the challenge. I also want to be available to help out with that challenge because, again, we know a lot of people and we can connect you with people who do want to be involved in photo shoots and being the face of Lake County as they get advertised all around the place. So I don't think it's an impossibility to ask for something to come back, but waiting till next year would be disappointing for me.
So is the next meeting in October?
Yeah, October 11th.
Okay, so we request a special meeting in September for just this item?
I mean, we can do special meetings. It's just.
Right. Yeah, I just know.
And I'm okay for October. I'm not, I don't have a timeline of when this needs to come back. I just don't want to wait till next year.
The reason I'm suggesting a special meeting is because the meetings are long because they're not every month. And so I want to, you don't want to make your next regularly scheduled meeting extra long for extra discussion because this is going to be a lot of discussion that's going to happen. So I'm just trying to be considerate of your normal meeting and also the urgency to bring this back. So what's your preference, I guess?
So, I mean, to Susan's point, I mean, our bank account is getting pretty low.
Yeah. Well, if we approve today.
We're on vapor.
And we request that, and we give a deadline of when we want to see an amendment to this, today's approved contract to incorporate this language. If you, if we wait until the October meeting, we may not see until December or November. So I just.
Yeah, I don't really envision you guys any shoots between now and then, to be honest with you. We just don't have those resources right now. Even when we do receive this money, we're not going to go out and do a photo shoot of, with, that's not going to represent the diversity that you're looking for. I think we really, you know, this, these conversations get difficult because what is your idea of diversity versus my idea of diversity? I think we're going to have to get really specific then. And I'm okay with that, but somebody's going to need to put it out there. What is your, what is that? Because like I said, we've used natives in our ads. We've had Latinos.
So.
I don't.
But do you want a special meeting or do you want a regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, so October?
October 11th.
Okay, so I'll be there. Staff will be there. If you want to invite.
Well, and when I speak of the tribes per se, I'm talking about the employees that work there and the people that work there. There's diverse cultures. I'm not just referring to tribes. I know a lot of times it gets construed that way because I used to be the tribal chair and I'm from Robinson, but I'm not. I'm talking about a wide array of different ethnicities that not only work there, but are in the district. That's why I mentioned also Juneteenth in Middletown. So I'm just trying to look at every single ethnicity as well. So that, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. So thanks.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, totally support moving this ahead with a firm commitment that we'll bring this back, probably starting with them and they can bring it back to the Board to address not just diversity and all that, but there are some housekeeping items that I mentioned on the website and just some cleanup. So just to clarify the scope of services and bring back recommended amendments, including diversity, but possibly also including some cleanup items.
I think we need to find consensus for that, though. Vice President Simon?
Okay. We're going to move forward, obviously, with it just committing before the end of the year that comes back. I don't want to put a specific date. Things happen, so definitely having that. So this discussion is put to bed before we do the long-term contract discussion that will be coming later. So obviously, in support of moving it forward there, I think that's a good compromise by Supervisor Spatier is we're moving this forward to let you know the support is here as we're having this conversation. And just, you know, on the equity, you have a pretty diverse Board. Maybe that's just a simple change of if you're a Board member, you may be thrown into a shoot when we're doing it out here. And, you know, I think it's a good idea. You know, we do contracts and other things with different partners here in the county and diversity isn't as good as it is on your current Board that you have here. So obviously, you don't hit every mark, but I think we're moving in the right direction. So I think it's just that conversation. But yeah, that might be a, hey, you're going to be on the Board. We might need you in this photo shoot over at the winery or the hotel or casino, whatever we're doing. So I think that's a way.
The TID Board.
Maybe.
TID Board is incredibly diverse.
Yeah, that's what I mean. There's your actors right there. There's your photo folks right there.
Other duties as a side.
Yeah, other duties as a stakeholder.
I'm with you.
Supervisor Green?
If I could try to get consensus, it doesn't have to be a whole lot, but governance is a thing and I think there is room for improvement on the main website and then there's sub-website and stuff like that. You know, we are routing TID dollars. It is a private agency, but we haven't really clarified, is it their intellectual property? Are we kind of sharing that intellectual property? You know, do all the bells and whistles of the website work correctly, including compliance with state and federal laws applying to such websites? So it's housekeeping in a sense. It's not going to be as interesting as the equity discussion, but I do think there is room for improvement in tidying up who's on first for intellectual property and compliance on the website. There's already some stuff in this contract about transparency. So I just think a little bit of additional work on that would polish that up nicely and would not take a lot of time.
If I may respond to that, I think that's within the contract already because the website is part of the services that you're providing. And so I think those are maybe more, because I know I've been to the website and it's nice the way that it advertises our county, whether it's events or whether it's hotels or restaurants. I just, I appreciate that. But I think it's in there.
Yeah.
Provide the services, activities, and program to promote tourism. Maybe it's not explicit. Maybe we can add such as the website. I don't know, but.
Our website is ADA compliant. We, you know, we do, that's really on the development end of things. We spend a lot of time and a lot of money to just keep the website in the current way. And you seem to be referring to maybe some backlinks and we can backlink to, the whole idea of Discover Your Lake, you guys got started because we created a district and there was no URL and the county wouldn't give us lakecounty.com for months and months. So we had established someplace for people to go see our meeting notes and minutes. We had to establish an email. We had to, we had to do this stuff in December of 18. Otherwise, we were not within the letter of the law of our new district that was formed. So I just, you know, eaty-meeny-miny mode and found something that had the word lake in it that wasn't taken, which was Discover Your Lake. And so we could backlink to it, but that's just really our, all DMOs have industry or trade sites. That's where they put their meeting notes, their minutes, their bylaws, their, all of that stuff. It's not on their visitor website. It's not hard at the base of our website to put a link to that website, but you don't really want that stuff in there.
And this contract isn't meant to micromanage the work.
Got you.
This is our agreement between the TID and the county. Okay, so it looks like we got some.
And just very quickly, I appreciate you're ADA compliant. You're not COPA compliant, so still work to do. Could be covered on the current contract, but same thing, I want to challenge it. I want to, I want to see that work done, so.
So at this moment, there is consensus for them to meet, hopefully sooner than later, but on their time, on their schedule. Bring it back to us with the amendments discussed for equity around the lake and diversity of imagery. And move forward and approve today to ensure that the work continues and is not postponed. And that's what I'm thinking will happen if I throw a motion out. Okay, just wanted to check in before I did a motion.
Throw the motion out.
All right, so I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California for provision of administrative services to Lake County Tourism Improvement